To order the regular meeting of the Twinsburg Board of Education for Wednesday, October 1st, 2014, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Here.
Mrs. Kane-Criswell?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
All right, if everybody would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to everybody and thanks for coming tonight, and a welcome to fall, huh? At our last board meeting, we were experiencing the last days of summer, and I think today it's very obvious that autumn has arrived. Tonight, in the President's Report, I wish to highlight one particular individual and the significant impact that this person is having on our school district, and the influence that she's having statewide. And that person is our Superintendent, Mrs. Powers. Mrs. Powers is responsible for managing and directing the day-to-day operations of this school district that has approximately 4,300 students, almost 500 employees, and a budget over $40 million. She provides leadership to the staff, and she responds to the Board of Education. Locally, Mrs. Powers represents our district as a member of many important organizations, which include the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, the Community Relations Board, the City of Twinsburg's Comprehensive Planning Committee, and the Twinsburg Community Improvement Committee. She also serves on the Steering Committee for Paws on Hunger, and also on the Steering Committee for Taste of Twinsburg. She attends the Twinsburg Ministerial Association meetings to stay in touch with our community. Regionally, she meets with representatives from Kent State University and maintains a very good relationship with the dean at our regional center located right here in Twinsburg. Mrs. Powers is also the newly-elected Vice President and President-elect for the Summit County Superintendents Association. She is the bridge between the tactical, day-to-day operations, and the more strategic visionary of where our district is going in the future. And she is now tightly coupled with people who are influencers at a statewide level. In addition to being a member of BASSA, which is the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, she was also elected to the Executive Committee for the Alliance of Higher Quality Education. Through BASSA and this alliance, Mrs. Powers is able to provide insight and have influence regarding state legislation involving the field of public education. BASSA is one of the organizations located in Columbus that lobbies on behalf of public education, so it's very important that they are aware of the issues from experts such as Mrs. Powers. Last week, Mrs. Powers was one of seven superintendents from across the state of Ohio who were invited to meet with Senator Keith Faber, who is the President of the Ohio Senate. It's important to note that this invitation was extended to superintendents from districts that are representative of the highest-performing school districts in Ohio. Mrs. Powers has informed the Board that some of the topics that were discussed include the Common Core requirements, third-grade reading guarantee, teacher licensure, end-of-course exams, staff evaluation requirements and processes, and some very interesting future strategic goals that involve the highest-performing districts in the state. The result of this meeting will involve this group of superintendents preparing an action plan with recommendations to Senator Faber and his staff. I think it's important to highlight these activities that our superintendent is involved in because it is a reflection of her hard work and dedication to our students, our school district, our community, and our public education in general. Thus, on behalf of the Board and our community, Mrs. Powers, thank you for your continued 24-by-7 dedication to our school district. Tonight, a very special welcome to the staff, students, and families from Bissell Elementary and Chamberlain Middle Schools. I know you're here tonight for some very special recognition, so without further delay, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Stuber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, community. I totally wasn't expecting that, so (laugh) thank you so much, Mr. Stuber. I have to tell you that, and the Board already knows, last week when I was sitting at the table with six other superintendents of the highest-performing school districts in the state of Ohio, it was all about the kids. And to be able to be seated at a table in the state Capitol Building, which itself is an impressive place to be, but to represent our 4,300 Tigers in the conversation that's going on down in Columbus is certainly an honor and a privilege for me to serve in this capacity. So it's all about the kids. I'm able to have those opportunities because of the wonderful students that are students here in our school district. It doesn't happen just because we want it to happen. It happens because our kids are so wonderful and come to school every day and make the best choices and really perform so outstandingly well compared to other students across the state and actually across the nation. So to be in Columbus and to be invited to be at that table was certainly one of those experiences I kept saying in my brain, "My gosh, I'm a second-grade teacher at heart. What am I doing here?" But to be able to represent the Twinsburg City School District with the highest-performing school districts in the state was certainly quite an honor, and much more work to be done behind the scenes. We have been given a charge by Senator Faber. He is looking for a strategic plan with action steps, talking about moving initiatives forward in the state of Ohio, and so we very much appreciate the opportunity to be representing our community right in Columbus where these high-power conversations are happening. So delighted, absolutely thrilled, and very proud to be not only the Superintendent of the Twinsburg City School District, but to be a resident of this community, and to be at that table is just amazing. So, so thank you. I appreciate your support. But it's all about the kids, and this evening we have RB Chamberlain Middle School and Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and wonderful students that we're going to be talking about some really great things in just a few minutes. But I wanted to have a few moments to just update the Board and the community about some important things happening here in the month of October. Can't believe it's October 1st. Where did September go? I keep saying, "Where did September go?" And the leaves are changing, and it's beautiful outside, and just great things are happening here in our school district. We continue to try to improve the way we communicate with our families, and you know that just about two weeks ago, our quality profile was launched, distributed through the Twinsburg Bulletin, posted on our website. But I wanted to share with the Board and our community this evening a new feature of our website that I'm not sure our families even know it's there. It's very interesting. It's fun. And Mrs. Farthing is going to call up the district homepage. I wanted to point out to everyone a new feature called Tiger Tidbits. And what Tiger Tidbits, or first of all, what it is, is on the homepage. That's the homepage of our website, and you see it's on the right-hand column. There it is. Tiger Tidbits. There's an old-fashioned camera right there. And if you click on Tiger Tidbits, what we have done is we've taken video of some of our very best programs, and also the summer edition of Twinsburg Schools today is there. So just to give you a little bit of an introduction, we're going to take a peek at something that Bissell has on Tiger Tidbits because we have a number of Bissell students here tonight. And this particular tidbit is talking about Jump Rope for Heart, and this was the campaign from last school year. So if you can just call that up and enlarge it for just a moment. Jump Rope for Heart is put on by the American Heart Association, and Samuel Bissell has been involved since the year 2000. This is our biggest fundraising year. We raised $20,535 as a total school. We also had a couple of our students raise over $1,000. In fact, we have one of them right here. She was, Puja was our top fundraiser. She raised $1,800, over $1,800 just herself. So it was very successful. (inaudible) and we all feel great that we helped a great cause. And most, we had two, over 250 students participate out of our, you know, 600 and some students. Also stressed that they're jumping in honor of people, hopefully someone that they know who maybe has been affected by heart disease or stroke.
My grandpa, he died because he had a heart attack. Both of my mom's parents, they also died from heart attacks.
I jumped in honor of my grandma. I jumped rope for her because she had a heart attack.
So we have so many great programs and activities in our school district. We thought this would be a great place to put some video clips, and so thanks to the work of Matt Zeronic, who is a graduate of, I think it was RB Chamberlain Middle School, RB Chamberlain High School at that point in time, and Logan Powowski, who is actually now a junior at Twinsburg High School, has worked behind the scenes to capture some of our finest programs, and we've now posted them here on the website, Tiger Tidbits. So check it out. Lots of great things happening in our school district, easy to find, and it's just a nice little introduction of some of the best things that are going on here in Twinsburg City Schools. This is a reminder to our parents that Friday of this week, October 3rd, is a waiver day. The Ohio Department of Education has provided us an opportunity for professional development. So our students do not have school on Friday of this week. Teachers will be in session, as well as classified staff members, working on a lot of big initiatives, including differentiation and instruction for our students. So Friday, October 3rd, no school for our students. It is a waiver day. Also, next Tuesday, October 7th, is a big, important day at Samuel Bissell Elementary School because that is the day of the third-grade reading Ohio Achievement Assessment Administration for the Fall. So I know our boys and girls at Bissell have been working really hard, sharpening a lot of reading skills and getting ready for Tuesday, and we know you're going to do a great job. So don't worry about testing and all of that. Just come in, get a good night's of rest, have a nice breakfast, and get ready to roll on next Tuesday morning. You're going to do fabulous. We just know you are. Also, next week is the week of our homecoming festivities, beginning with Monday, October 6th. There will be a homecoming rally outside of Tiger Stadium, beginning at 6 o'clock, and that's immediately preceding the soccer game that evening. Also, I want to thank our Twinsburg High School Pep Club and our junior class for planning all kinds of great activities for the students next week. And all that culminates on Friday night with our homecoming game, Friday, October 10th, where our queen and king will be crowned. I don't know who that will be, but it's going to be a lot of excitement next week. And then, of course, our homecoming dance for the high school students is next Saturday at Twinsburg High School. I want to thank Mrs. Chiringo and her staff, especially the Pep Club advisors and the junior-class advisors, and all of our Pep Club students and junior-class students at Twinsburg High School who have just planned a great week of great activities for homecoming festivities. Also coming up very soon, on October 15th, is the National Day of Assessment for students at Twinsburg High School and RB Chamberlain Middle School. You heard us talk at our last board meeting about career and college readiness and how important it is that our students are preparing today for what they need to know when they graduate from Twinsburg High School. So there are going to be some tests administered on those dates of October 15th. Our PSAT is going to be administered in grades 10 and 11, and in grade 8 and 9, the Ready Step Assessment will be administered. Again, these are college and career readiness assessments that will help our students make good choices when we're talking about high school class selections, and then also getting them ready for the ACT or the SAT assessments as they prepare to graduate from Twinsburg High School and on to college. Also, a reminder that our PTA Council is selling entertainment books for $30 each, and proceeds will benefit the PTA Scholarship Program. If you are interested in information, please go on our district website and click on District Support Organizations. Under that is a PTA tab, and that's all the information that you need to know to purchase PTA entertainment books. We thank Mrs. Sherry Bada and the members of our PTA Council and all of our units, our PTA units across the district. They do great things with our kids, and thank you, parents, for supporting our PTAs across the district. So that's enough from me this evening. We have great kids, and Mr. Winter is here tonight to help us celebrate, first and foremost, students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So, Mr. Winter, why don't you come on up? And I think Mrs. Terrell Waldron has some pins, and Mr. Walker is going to help with certificates.
Boys and girls, when your name is called, you want to come up and be very proud because this is a big night for you. I want to shake hands with Mr. Winter, and he has a certificate, and Mrs. Terrell Waldron has a very nice pin for you to recognize you for some great efforts tonight. And Mr. Walker will help you make sure you know where you're standing up here, and make sure you stay up here until all of the students from Bissell have been recognized, because I know how moms and dads are. They want to take a photo of you tonight. So just stay put up front until we're all done. We'll take a nice picture, and then we'll be finished with Bissell and on to RB Chamberlain. So, the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third-grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, and volunteer, or other accomplishments that set these students apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. So beginning with our second-grade boys and girls, we have Sophia Harza from Mr. Harrison's Malia Hubbard from Mrs. Doyle's class.[924.91][924.91](applause) Sheldon Logan from Mrs. Holliday's class.[934.04][934.04](applause) And Alex Ricardi from Mrs. Springer's class.[944.88][944.88](applause) Next, we're moving on to our third graders. We have Makaya Drankard from Mr. Labus's class.[959.04][959.04](applause) And Major Grant from Ms. Bolinski's class.[975.43][975.43](applause) Amaya Pereira from Mrs. Angler's class.[987.54][987.54](applause) And Faith Young from Mrs. Cardeman's class.[1002.91][1002.91](applause) They look so wonderful this evening. Let's give them a round of applause.[1012.73][1012.73](applause) Okay, boys and girls, just stay up there one more minute because you see all the cameras and cell phones, your moms and dads, and grandmas and grandpas want some nice pictures All right, thank you, boys and girls.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I've been a part of the Bissell staff now for about 12 years. I may be a little biased, but I think we have the best staff in all of the Twinsburg City Schools. And to that point, I would like to thank Ms. Bolinski, Mrs. Holliday, Mrs. Doyle, Mrs. Frye for coming out tonight, Mrs. Angler for showing your support. You know, it's always very difficult to choose who our two Staff Members of the Month are going to be. So this year, or excuse me, this month, it was a very difficult decision, but our first Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Patty Mold. So Patty, come on down.[1103.54][1103.54](applause) Now, this is Patty's first year with us, and this was her first opportunity ever to be Staff Member of the Month, and she nailed it first try. So, so kudos to her. Now, she was nominated by many people, many staff members, because she offers so much help to all of us. She's our technology guru, we like to call her, and she has helped me personally with many different projects already this school year. So I do want to personally thank you for that, Patty. Thank you. But I would also like to read the nominations from other staff members as well. So this first one is from Mallory Ziska, and Mallory is one of our second-grade teachers. And she wrote, "Patty is a great addition to our school. It has been wonderful having Patty as a resource for technology in the building. She was always willing to help solve a problem and offer assistance when needed. She has completed great lessons with the students in the computer lab to get them excited about typing and exploring computers. I'm thankful we have her at Samuel Bissell this year." And her other nominations were from Ms. Bolinski, who is a third-grade teacher, and Mrs. Haas, also a third-grade teacher, and they wrote, "We would like to nominate Ms. Patty Mold for Staff Member of the Month. Patty, a new employee of our school, has been an extremely valuable resource to our staff. She has been a tremendous support in every aspect of technology as the new year got underway, including new devices, testing, and troubleshooting. We could be viewed as our, what could be viewed as an overwhelming number of tasks with so many demands coming from different areas of the building. Patty has handled all requests and challenges quickly, efficiently, and with the most pleasant smile and demeanor. Additionally, the lessons Patty delivers to our students are top-notch, well-planned, meaningful learning experiences. Patty is truly an asset to our entire school community." And our second Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Kate Cardeman. Kate, come on down.[1244.97][1244.97](applause) And Mrs. Cardeman has been with us now at Bissell for two years, and I had a kid her last year. As one of my responsibilities, I check over lesson plans, and some of the terminology she uses in her lesson plans had me pulling out my old textbooks when I was in college. So I learned a lot just by reading her lesson plans and had to do some research myself on the things that she was doing in class. But she was nominated by Ms. Kate Kiliani, who is a new teacher that we have in third grade at Samuel Bissell, and she wrote, "I would like to nominate Kate Cardeman as the Staff of the Month. Kate is extremely helpful with any question I may have, and is always there to give me the support a new teacher needs. She is always eager to show me things she is doing while sharing ideas she has come up with. I know Kate would drop anything she was doing to help me with anything I would ever need. I look forward to continuing to grow professionally with Kate as a partner and friend."
Thank you. Mr. Winter, before you sneak off, can you provide for the Board, just in our community, a little bit of information about your Fame Fathers Walk from last week, and a little bit of details about how many dads were there and what that was all about?
Sure.
So, we were, we had extremely high turnout for our Fame Fathers Walk, and what that was, was it was an opportunity for dads and other father figures to come out with their kids, to walk them to school, to spend the morning with them. You know, the hope was to, you know, with the hustle and bustle of everyone's morning, to take a little time out to walk to school, maybe have a little breakfast, and, you know, spend that quality time that, quite honestly, we don't always get to have each morning. So we had a tremendous turnout. We estimated probably about 300-plus father and father figures came out, and it was really wonderful to see. We were really blessed with a great day. The weather was wonderful, a little chilly, but, you know, beautiful day. So it was really wonderful. It's something we like to obviously continue going forward. So I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to support it, all the dads, uncles, grandfathers, to share what I thought was a fantastic morning. So thank you for that.[1393.04][1393.04](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Winter.[1396.04][1396.04](applause) Okay, now I'd like to ask Mr. Reese to come forward, and we're going to present our Students of the Month from RB Chamberlain Middle School. Welcome, Mr. Reese. Students receiving the honor of Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all six of the criteria listed below. Each student has to meet all six criteria in all of their classes, as the grade-level teams decide upon two boys and two girls to be selected each month from each grade. And the criteria include: The students show respect and consideration for others; show enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities; exert a positive influence on classmates; exhibit leadership characteristics; exhibit patriotism and democratic principles; and they show responsibility, punctuality, completing their assignments on time, and are just all-around great students. And I guess I don't need to tell the RBC students, but you know what to do. You come up here and shake hands with Mrs. Terrell Waldron and Mr. Reese, receive your certificate, and then please stand in front of the table so that all of our students can be recognized and give our parents an opportunity for a nice photo before we sit down for the presentation, okay? So we'll begin with our seventh-grade students for the September Students of the Month. We're very pleased and proud of the following boys and girls. First of all, we have Brandon Stroke.[1473.16][1473.16](applause) And Nicholas Weber.[1505.83][1505.83](applause) Okay, moving on to eighth grade, we have Grace Milliken.[1514.28][1514.28](applause) And last but not least, Zachary Seiko.[1560.04][1560.04](applause) We are very, very proud of our Students of the Month from RBC. Let's join together with a round of applause.[1577.16][1577.16](applause) Okay, just a few more moments. We still see some cell phones out and cameras and such.[1593.54][1593.54](pause) Thank you very much, boys and girls. We're very proud of each and every one of you.[1615.73][1615.73](applause) Mr. Reese has had a very, very busy first quarter of his first year here in our school district, and he's doing some fabulous things at our middle school to share with you some of those items tonight. We welcome Mr. Reese.
It's been a busy beginning to the school year, but it's been a great beginning to the school year. We're very excited about the grant from the GAR and SMART Consortium that we received, and we began that this month with a meeting with them. They did walkthroughs through our teacher classrooms, and they ran our staff meeting. And that's really going to help us instructionally to stretch our higher achievers with project-based learning. And the differentiation instruction that we're going to receive on Friday is also going to help us to really challenge our top students, and so I think that's going to be a great addition to our teachers', you know, bag of tricks that they have to help our students achieve. We've also had the pleasure of having coaches this year, and we started the year, and we looked at all the data and saw who needed help from MAP testing, OAA testing, and we scheduled them in with the coaches. But now that the year has started, we're getting grades, and every Friday, our teams are pulling a DNF list of kids who are struggling. And sometimes in life, things happen, and even the good kids need some extra help. The best students need some extra help because things are happening, whether they're at school or at home. And so we're identifying those kids, and we're helping those kids, because our goal is that every student would pass every class. And we have some honors kids now who are going and getting help from coaches because we found out things are happening, and we're giving them some help with guidance classes and groups, and meeting with our guidance counselors to form what we call that brick house, where no kid falls behind with the systems we have in place. And so it's very encouraging, and I think our students have really bought into that we're there to help them. We had Dr. Jason Carton, former NFL player, in last week, and he gave a motivational talk to the kids. That was very exciting. The kids really connected with him. Tomorrow night is RBC night at the football game, so our kids are going to join the high school band, and our football team's going to get to be out on the sidelines for the first half of the game. I know they're looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to the first half because I won't have to watch them. I think the coaches will be in charge of them out there. Athletically, we've had a great start. None of our teams have losing records, our fall sports teams. Our girls' cross-country team is 11-0, undefeated. They're unbelievable.[1793.83][1793.83](applause) Thank you.[1795.83][1795.83](applause) Our boys' cross- Our boys' cross-country team is 10-1. They have so many kids out for the team. The coaches just really sell the sport, and it's a great activity for them. Our 7th and 8th grade football team had games tonight against Hudson. 7th grade won away at Hudson, but the exciting game was here. Hudson was 5-0. We were 5-0. We're 6-0. So, our 8th grade football team won. And we're also... And I know you hear the word "testing," and people kind of cringe. We're looking forward, though, for our students to take the Ready Step test in a couple of weeks during the National Day of Testing. And that's really the springboard into the college entrance exams, the SATs. And the fact that we're participating in that will give our kids a leg up in a couple of weeks, and our 8th graders will be doing that. So, academically, athletically, socially, emotionally, our kids are doing great, and it's just been a great opening to the school year. Thank you.
A lot of exciting things happening at our middle school, and it's just a great place for our middle school students to be, thanks to Mr. Reese and his leadership. The team there works so well together, and we're expecting great things all year long. So, thank you, Mr. Reese, for sharing that information with our board tonight. That concludes our comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. For those of you who would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. But if you wish to go home and take care of homework and other things, now would be the time to exit through the back.
That's not for everybody.
No, you have to stay.
Let's be out of homework. I can't do their homework anymore.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on with the agenda. Next up are the committee reports, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Curtis, who I know is here tonight to give us an update from the CVCC.
Thank you, and good evening. Yes, Ron, you are right, fall is here.
Yes.
Had to break out the jacket. Had to do it. But I'm looking forward to continued success in the school year. I just have a few things to report on. Some things are piggybacking on what Steve had previously reported and some updates as well. I want to circle back to the invitation that Steve spoke of the last time we presented. The... We're going to be hosting the 16th Annual Combined Associate District's Board Meeting on November the 6th. If you have not already received an eVite, you will individually from Selena and/or her designee. So, that's going to be coming, but we're going to be in your ear. We'd like to see you there. What they're going to be doing there is going to be doing a special presentation or update relative to the Ramtech Center from the Straight A Grant. So, you're going to want to be there to kind of get, you know, get some good news. I do have some information relative to that as well, that I'll be talking to also. So, we really look forward to you being there representing Twinsburg, so...
Mark, what time will that be on that November 6th night?
I don't have the time.
It's in the evening, though.
I think it's to be determined. It is going to be in the evening.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is an update, something that actually we talked about very early on last year when I started my term, and that's House Bill 428, and it's relative to the rotating seat. And there's been some changes to the legislation. The bill has been amended so that my term would be a full term, but thereafter, it goes to a one-year rotation, as opposed to what they previously were talking about, either one-year rotation or just getting rid of the seat altogether. So, that's what's currently up right now. I don't know that it's moved a whole lot. Not exactly sure when to anticipate if it's going to be voted on to become law, or whatever the case may be, but that's the latest. So, I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Third thing is, we had our board meeting last week, and instructors from the Auto Service Technology Program did a presentation whereby they're pretty much going paperless. They... The students, including our students who are enrolled in the program, now have been issued Chromebooks. And they use... They're able, through the Chromebooks and cloud-based technology, they're able to do all of their assessments online, all of their work. I don't know that they... I don't think they use any paper at all. And since there are multiple classes, sections of the class that come through, since everything is cloud-based, nothing is saved on the device, people can... Other students can come in, pull down their information, and work using Google Apps and Google-based technology. So, it's something that's pretty cool, that the instructors took the initiative to do this on their own. They weren't paid any extra money, or whatever the case may be. Of course, the center supplied them with the technology, but the students took off running, whether it is the instructors. They had the learning curve. But in so doing, it's made instruction a lot easier. Again, they're not killing any trees, and, you know, the kids are learning the technology that they're going to be using when they go out into the workforce. And so, I was pretty impressed with that. I was actually, you know, kind of taken aback because auto service technology, that's not something that you think about. You think about people getting their hands dirty and, you know, looking at motors and things like that. And I realize that the cars today are highly... There's a lot of technology and electronics and so forth involved, and computers. So, this is something that kind of helps them transition into the workforce a lot easier. So, it's something that's going on, and I wanted to report out on that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, the new report card has come out, and so, our report card came out, and there's a few things that we can boast and brag about. And I'll just talk about a couple of them. Some of the highlights were that we had the highest-ever post-program placement rate of 98%, 98.4%. Highest-ever technical skill attainment rate at 85.4%. And highest-ever percentage of students earning an industry credential at 89.7%. Pretty impressive. We're one of the best in Ohio, and we're going to keep on on that road. So, we're real pleased with how we did on our report card, and we're going to keep going. Last and not least, we... The Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as the Finance Committee, met to kind of work out some of the finer points and details around the Ramtech Center so that it can move forward. I have pictures for you, schematics. And the schematics are pictures of the front of the building, as well as the front page is the front of the building, proposed schematics, as well as the interior of the facility. So, we're very excited that we have a conceptual view of what it's going to look like, next steps, or we are going to be preparing to put it out to bid. The superintendent has met with officials in the city, city planning office and so forth, so that we can get all of our ducks in a row, so that we don't have any sticking points and things like that. We do have a proposed budget, and we aim to stay within that budget and make sure that this project is completed on time. As Steve told you, it's a pretty ambitious timeframe that we're looking to get this thing done before the national... The Republican National Convention comes here to Cleveland. It's something that we've been told is going to be one of the highlights that they're going to want to take a look at. So, we want to make sure that we make Ohio proud, and not only that, the Career Center proud. So, that being said, that concludes my update. Any questions?
Mark, just quickly on the rotating seat.
Yes.
We'll... I know from my perspective, I would respect the opinion of you and Mr. Schibek in terms of what you think the legislation should or shouldn't do. You know, when you were appointed, we were very transparent, and, you know, you completely understood that your term could be a full term, but that there was some action that might make it be a one-year term. So, you know, I am fully looking for you and Steve to provide some feedback to the board, and just let us know, you know, from a CVCC perspective, where you think that particular board is leaning, and where you and Steve, in terms of your representation of Twinsburg, believe that seat should be, so...
Okay, I will be happy to do that. I'll make sure that I have some conversation with Steve, and we can come back with you with something a little bit more comprehensive.
Just from the perspective, if we need to weigh in on it with any type of a resolution that provides our support for the legislation or for changes to the legislation, if it would be so appropriate, we would look to you for that leadership.
I appreciate that, and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Remonstrance is next, and rather than me come, sit down and come back up, would it be okay if I made some comments?
Before you do, I'd like to finish with the committee reports. If that's okay?
Okay.
And just from a procedural perspective, can I ask you to fill out one of the blue cards in the back and hand it into the treasurer? I would like you to do that while we finish up committee reports. That way, I am completely transparent with how I handle the meeting, so...
Okay.
I'll call you back up in just a second.
Thank you for your time.
How's that? Any other committee reports tonight? Policy, anything you guys are going to schedule, I guess, a policy committee or coming soon?
Packets being zeroed.
Okay. All right. And then, Mr. Aho, I'd like to just suggest that as we get into October here, that we schedule something finance-wise. Maybe we can exchange some emails and exchange some dates, since the five-year forecast is going to be coming up. I always like to get a peek at that before we do the presentation. And I'm talking about these things while I give Mr. Curtis a chance to fill out his blue card. Buildings and grounds, anything that you guys would like to comment on?
Just maybe that... I wouldn't be opposed to us sitting down again, just to kind of see where we're at with the plan that Chad's working on. I know he's been pulled in 18 directions, but just kind of seeing where we're moving with that. So, maybe we could set a date for that as well.
Okay. If there are no other committee reports, I'll move on to remonstrance.
I'm sorry, I would just mention, just looking at the date, October 27th is the next Curriculum Technology.
October 27th?
27th, 6:00 p.m. at RBC.
6:00 p.m.
Yeah, Curriculum and Technology. Now we're done.
Now we're done.
Do you have enough time, Mark?
Nothing else on committees? All right, next on the agenda is, in fact, remonstrance. And just as a reminder, I like to say this statement so that people that are watching understand the purpose. The purpose of the regular meetings of the Twinsburg Board of Education is to conduct business, and because the Board of Education represents a school district, which is a public organization, these business meetings are required to be conducted in public. The regular business meetings are different from community forums or other special meetings, which are conducted with specific intent to engage with and encourage interactive discussion with the community. To accommodate public participation as a part of the regular business meetings, an agenda item called remonstrance is included, and the conduct for remonstrance is provided for, in the Board of Education Bylaws, Section 0169.1. Persons wishing to speak during remonstrance are asked to provide their name, address, and group affiliation by filling out the blue card and turning it into the treasurer or the superintendent prior to the meeting. Comments should be limited to five minutes, and while statements regarding matters of general district policy or procedures are appropriate, statements should not be personally directed or abusive, nor should statements be made regarding specific disciplinary matters involving students or staff. To address such concerns, the Board of Education requests that you submit those concerns in writing to the superintendent. Persons wishing to address the board may do so at this time. Mr. Curtis, if you could just give that to Mr. Aho. And thank you very much for participating in the process that we have. I am trying to be consistent with that with all community members.
I can appreciate procedures.
So, thank you very much.
That being said, I'm going to follow procedures. My name is Mark Curtis. I live at 1057... 10472 Wichita Court. And I wanted to come to address the board, switching hats, as a resident and as a parent of a child that attends Dodge Elementary, specifically, ironically, Father's Day, or Fathers Walk. I had the pleasure and privilege of attending my son's last Fathers Walk for Dodge Elementary. And I have to say, for the third year that I've been attending, this particular year of all years was very moving. It warmed my heart to see the tremendous turnout, standing room only. And it's probably one of the only times where I didn't have a problem parking far away. The work that I do, some of the work that I do with the state diagnostic team, when I go to school districts and I do assessments, and we look at a number of things that we consider critical in the success of student achievement. And one of the things that is most overlooked, that we highlight with the districts that we work with, is the lack of parental involvement, community and parent involvement. It's one of the most critical elements, but yet, many districts tend to overlook that or don't look at it as very important. And Twinsburg, I couldn't say more to the extent that it is highly regarded, and it is evident. It was very evident and apparent to me as I was there in the midst of the day. My son's eyes just lit up, and you could just look around the gym, and, I don't know, I'd just get emotional. It was moving. And so, I wanted to take the opportunity to speak to that and to acknowledge the hard work of all of the administrators here in Twinsburg, and especially those that have events like this. It's not the only thing. I mean, you do a lot in the way of providing forums to inform parents and educate them on a lot of the initiatives that are out there today. It's a lot. But the extent to which you continue to do so, and it's very intentional, lets me know that you understand the value, you understand the importance of making sure that parents are partners in their children's education. And events like that, you know, they go a long way, so I just wanted to express my appreciation and, again, offer some encouraging words that keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll move on in the agenda now to action items under Agenda Item G, under the Treasurers' Report. We have one item here. Item G1, that the Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes from the regular meeting of September 17th, 2014, which was sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for this item, please?
Some of them.
Moved by Mr. Felber, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And that item passes 5-0. Under the action items for Agenda Item H, Personnel, I'm going to bring together Consent Agenda Items H1 and 2 without objection. We'll act on H3 separately. Item H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item H2, that the Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for these two agenda items? Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion on these first two items, H1 and 2? Roll call, please. Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those items, H1 and 2, pass 5-0. Item H3, resolve that the Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendation detailed in the attached Exhibit H3... detailed in the attached exhibit H three as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for this one agenda item?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Abstain.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes four with one abstention. Moving on to the new business action items under Agenda Item I. We have seven there that I would like to read together, Consent Agenda without objection. Item I one, resolve that the Board of Education accepts a donation of six hundred and fifty-four dollars to the Dodge Intermediate School to support the Math Olympiad program per the attached exhibit I one, and I'd just like to note that if I'm correct, that's from the Dodge PTA. Item I two, that the Board of Education approves the reappointment of Holly Toth as the trustee of the Twinsburg Public Library for a seven-year term. This term is to commence January first, 2015, and end December thirty-first, 2021, which was sent to the board under separate cover. Item I three, that the Board of Education approves Lori Slattery as a credentialed evaluator for the purpose of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. Item I four, that the Board of Education accepts a donation of various furniture, office, and school supplies from the City Council of the City of Twinsburg at the estimated value of two hundred dollars. These items will be used at the Bissell Elementary School. Item I five, that the Board of Education approves a release of transportation for three students for the 2014-2015 school year to the Twinsburg City School District. The students are one student from Bedford City School District to St. Rita, one from Nordenia to St. Rita, and one from Solon to CVCA. Item I six, that the Board of Education approves a release of transportation for one student for the 2014-15 school year from the Twinsburg City School District to the Solon City School District. And item I seven, that the Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Humanities Class from the Twinsburg High School to travel to Paris from November eighteenth, 2014 through November twenty-third, 2014. This trip will be paid in full by the students, and the trip request was sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these seven agenda items, please?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Kane Criswell, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Mrs. Powers, you and I have discussed this, or maybe it would be better for Mr. Welker, either one of you, but I think for item I five and six, just a little explanation on that. I know I've discussed it with you, but I think you could do a better explanation.
Sure. Item five has three school districts, Bedford, Nordenia, and Solon, releasing one student apiece for us to transport with our transportation to St. Rita's and CVCA. In a case like this, these families probably have childcare in our community, and Solon, for example, will release the student from counting them into their calculations for state aid. We, we take on the responsibility of transporting that student. Number six is just the opposite. We have a student in our school district who has family in Solon. The student is traveling to Hawkins. We don't take a bus to Hawkins, Solon does, so we release that student to Solon to transport, and it's just, you know, a legal thing between school districts. If we have transportation going here or there and another school district doesn't, we can transport that child likewise. They do the same favor for us.
So it's just a matter of cooperation between school districts, and there are dollars that are associated with this, that instead of one school district getting those transportation dollars, another school district gets those transportation dollars for that student.
Right. So the three students from Bedford, Nordenia, and Solon are being transported from a Twinsburg address? Is that correct? That's what I'm understanding, yes. Okay. Yes, they have family here, childcare arrangements, an aunt or grandma or something. Okay.
So if we already have a bus going to one of those schools?
Sure, makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, then it works that way. Just a special thanks, there's donations on the agenda. I'd just like to thank the Dodge PTA for their donation to the Dodge School to help with the Math Olympiad, and then also to the City of Twinsburg for the school supplies and office furniture that we may be able to use. So thank you to them for that. Is there any other, excuse me, losing my voice, any other comments regarding the agenda Wish the students the trip to Paris a fun time. I know that this is something that has become reoccurring, and my youngest son was able to participate in the Humanities Class Trip the first year they did it. So this is paid for in full by the students and the parents, so it's noted that way, but it is a wonderful trip if they can, can do so, so.
You know, in reviewing scholarship applications, Mr. Stuber, this is one of the things that most students will note as the highlights of Twinsburg High School, is being able to participate in an international trip like this one.
Yeah.
So we're very excited about the opportunity for these kids to travel.
And, and thanks to the, the teachers that, that organized this and chaperoned the students to these locations. I'm sure they enjoy the trip too, but, so, yeah. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those agenda items pass five oh. We have two more agenda items under item I. These involve some change requests. Item I, I will read both of these together, Consent Agenda without objection, eight and nine. Item I eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves change orders from Ohio Paving of Willoughby, Ohio for paving at the board office at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Change order number four addresses soft subgrade at the board office. Phase one of the project and change order number five addresses soft subgrade at the board office and phase two of the project, as well as fixing catch basins for drainage purposes. This expense will be paid for out of the permanent improvement funds. Item I nine, that the Board of Education approves change orders from White House Construction in Bedford Heights for the construction of trophy cases at the Twinsburg High School at a cost not to exceed one thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Change order number one provides additional plywood for the trophy case, and change order number two modified the carpeting for the trophy cases. This project is a joint venture between the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters and the Twinsburg City School District and is being paid for using permanent improvement funds. Is there a motion for these two agenda items, please?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Davis, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Anybody with discussion on these change orders?
Yeah, just on number eight, I just, and I've already kind of addressed the, the question, but looking at the parking lot, it's completed already up at the board office, am I correct, or? Yes, except for a handicap rail by the, the front doors. Okay. So typically with change orders, are they to be approved prior to completion, and what is our policy on change orders as far as when they're, you know, how they get approved and how, when the work gets done? Does any? Go ahead, Chad.
Chad?
So, so for, for change orders during the process of the construction process, we, we are, we have a, a number of consultants who are reviewing our change order process. All these change orders are, are below a fifteen thousand dollar threshold, which is where, where we have to go to the board for approval.
Preapproval.
For, for, all right, for preapproval.
Okay.
Basically, as we're going through the process, there's unexpected things that come up. For instance, for, at the board office, there was a, a number of soft subgrade issues. There was also some drains that weren't working properly that, that we wound up having to, as part of the documents, investigate to figure out how, how to fix that, and I'm happy to report that those issues have been resolved. But we, we work hand-in-hand with our consultants to make sure that we're, we're comparing it to industry averages to make sure that we're, we're getting the best price possible given a change order.
Sure. And, and I would just like to say, I'm glad that we're doing, we're not piecemealing it, and I'm glad that we did it right from the get-go and really put into it so we don't have to, in the future, come back and make corrections. So I do commend you on that. I just was not aware of the, you know, what the, the process was, so thank you for clarifying.
I think the question is a good one. It's, I, I think we can all appreciate with construction projects, especially in, in your, your family, you would know this, that, you know, unforeseen things happen, and therefore the administrators are given a, a certain threshold that below that, from a tactical perspective, they can make these decisions as best appropriate for the district. Beyond that, then there needs to be a pre, preapproval where it's brought to the board ahead of time.
Right.
So these are well within that, that threshold, but I think it's just a process question.
Sure, no. And I guess my only other request would be is if, you know, if something were like this to come up again, if there were any changes, just if we could be brought into the loop, the Buildings and Grounds, just a little bit more on, as far as that there were changes to that extent. I just, I was surprised to see that big of a number, and, and of course, it's, it's within our, you know, what our boundaries are, but like I said, if, you know, in the future, as a favor, I would like to be, you know, and Kate, as Buildings and Grounds, if we could be a part of, you know, knowing that that was happening.
And one of, one of the challenges that you have in, in the construction process is that basically there are certain timelines for, for all these different projects, and we, we hold our contractors to a substantial completion date as well, and so we're, we're trying to make sure we balance those as well to, to make sure that we don't have the contractor pulling crews off of our, off of our.
Of course, yeah, just a phone call or an email, nothing, you know.
I would think, you know, from the policy side, the spirit of what this is written, you know, to reinforce what you said, there's a timeliness to certain things. If you were to, you know, have something come up tomorrow, that's a good two weeks until we meet again, and the schedules and such, and the interruption, and there could actually be increasing costs, weather delays and such. So I'm comfortable with the threshold and the, and the spirit of the policy.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
And those two items pass five oh. Is there anything under miscellaneous tonight? If not, we do have need for an executive session. I will make the motion that the board moves to executive session at eight oh three p.m. to consider the purchase of property per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-C and to discuss the discipline of a student and staff member per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-A, and to discuss the specialized details of security arrangements per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-G. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Please note, there will be no action taken after this executive session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Trow Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
And that motion passes five oh. Thanks to everybody who stayed tonight. The board will now move to executive session.